What up? Okay, uh, the time now is one o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order. We'll start our meeting today with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, uh, the first item on today's agenda is employee recognition. We always like to take the time out to celebrate, uh, employee milestones. Um, and so we'll start with Paula Wardan, who, um, we are celebrating 35 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
And second, I have Brandon Anderson, who works at the Whitley County Jail, um, who's celebrating 20 years.
Brandon Anderson worked for us for a long time.
Works for us.
He works for Paula.
For about 10 years?
Yeah. 20 years, that's, that's huge. Tom, thank you.
I will, thank you.
I have Tasha Springer.
Better stay up here.
With 20 years.
I'm very blessed, aren't I?
Dan Weagle, 25 years.
Thank you very much.
And your last one, huh?
The last one, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I gotta say thank you to all of you for an amazing career. Thanks for going up with me, and I'm not here to ask for anything this time, and I've been fortunate enough to work with some amazing department heads. The GIS isn't what it is without them. It's not a me thing, it's a we thing. And I just gotta say, thank you, thank you, thank you. I've been able to raise my kids because of this, and so thank you so much for everything. I really do appreciate it. And thank all of you in the public. I got to meet some incredible people, so.
I have, uh, Mark Sturdeman, 20 years. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. I have Randy Kokel for 20 years. I don't believe Randy's with us today. And also I have Scott Pettigrew, also with 20 years. So thank you to those two gentlemen for their valuable contributions. And, uh, kind of in that same vein, uh, the idea of, of some kind of special recognition has been floated in the past, and it's will of the Board of Commissioners that, um, from time to time moving forward as it, as it comes up, uh, there will, will recognize someone in a public meeting. And so, uh, I'd like to ask Nathan Bilger to come forward, please. So I just want to read this statement. It says, Nathan was nominated for this award by a peer who stated that Nathan goes above and beyond his job duties when he sees a way he can help or improve Whitley County government. He demonstrates that he truly cares about Whitley County and also for his employees and coworkers. He takes pride in his department, and he contributes to a positive work culture. I have confidence and can rely on Nathan when I know a member of the public needs assistance. I know he will treat others with respect and provide excellent service. And, uh, some specifics. Nathan upgraded our YouTube channel and made it look professional, up to date, and amazing. He did it all, for all the departments, and made it look uniform. Starting in 2019, Nathan has designed and printed attractive and useful yearly calendars for office use, which, it's right there. Uh, Nathan has many times dropped what he's doing to, uh, help me and assist others with IT issues. So we would just like to publicly say thank you, Nathan, for all you do, and especially all you do that, that is not in your, in your job description. Thank you.
Uh, you're up next. Do you have anything else to add, Dan, or did, did you cover it?
Yes, I want to introduce you to the new GIS coordinator for Whitley County, Beverly Perry. She comes to us, uh, from Fort Wayne, and I'm kinda, in my opinion, I'm sitting next to a celebrity. Uh, she, uh, she was a Channel 55, uh, weather, weather meteorologist, and, uh, she's coming in, and she's a quick learner, and she's, uh, just doing an amazing job so far, so I'm really excited for her to have, uh, come in and replace me, and, uh, good luck. I mean, no, but, uh, she's doing an amazing job, and, uh, Whitley County's really lucky to have her. And so pretty, pretty excited to see where the GIS is gonna go in the near future. There's gonna be a lot of changes happening, uh, technology-wise, and, uh, I think she's ready to tackle it and move on. So thank you so much, and again, thank you for everybody, for everything you've done for me. I've been truly blessed. You know, Lou Gehrig said it best. I'm no Lou Gehrig, but I do feel like I'm the luckiest man out here, so, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. Nice to have you.
Pleasure to be here.
Oh, sorry. Just back in a means of explanation here. This, uh, recognition thing is something that's come up several months ago. I gotta give credit to Amy Beckel from Superior Court. It was kind of originally her idea, and it was something we wanted to, to run with. And so going forward, if a department head, or an employee, or even a member of the public would like to recognize a Whitley County employee for some special recognition like this, we encourage them to let us know, and, and kinda, kinda, that's what was done here, and, uh, so I think it's a great thing, and I'm excited about it.
Okay. Uh, moving on, we'll go to the, uh, Whitley County Transit NDOT Quarterly Report.
You'll have that document in the front of you?
Yes.
Just as a, just as a reminder, um, every year we have to apply to NDOT as an, for an application for what we do with the transit. So in January, we were applied for 2026, so this quarterly report is based on what got applied in 2024. So just how that works, just to, just to bring everybody up to speed. Um, this is just the quarterly grant that is, that is given. I have to fill out a report, fairly lengthy report, that goes back, um, and we go back and forth. We have to allocate all expenses for transit than anything that is not transit. Um, there's two different sheets we have to work off. They have to be in balance, and, uh, that got approved, um, last week, last Monday. So I'm just here to, um, and since you are the pass-through agency, just to get a signature to say, yes, you're, you're willing to sign off on this grant application. It has the breakdowns of what comes from federal, what from, comes from state, and then what things that we have to do to raise funds. But again, this is, like, I'll be back here for third quarter, then fourth quarter, and then the beginning of the year will be the, the big Kahuna when, when we have the 2027 application go through.
Any questions for GM?
I have none.
I would entertain a motion to approve the quarterly report.
So moved.
Second.
I have my motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and that motion carries unanimously.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, I can email to you.
Uh, the next item on the agenda today is, uh, GIS seat grant and service agreement.
Oh, good afternoon. Uh, this, uh, what this is, is an agreement with Abbott Marsh Engineering to, uh, put together a grant application, and then also, uh, presumably be the, if, if the grant is awarded, then be the following engineer to work on the project. Uh, the GIS seat grant is offered by the state geographic information office. It is intended to be up to a $30,000 grant to help counties, uh, primarily counties, uh, to upgrade their GIS and addressing to the next-gen 911 standards. Indiana as a whole is kind of behind other states. Uh, that standard has been out now for...
Six years?
About six years, give or take, slowly becoming more and more standard. Uh, so what this would do, the state is trying to get everybody on board, uh, cross compatibility, across GIS, dispatch, and so on, and importantly, county to county, uh, and particularly, uh, dispatch. There are other benefits, but, uh, dispatch is the biggest one. Uh, what has to happen is our GIS data has to be verified and validated against the standard. Any changes have to be updated and so on. $30,000 is likely not going to be everything, but the intent of this project is to get us, get the ball rolling so that we have the tools and the methodology to be able to finish it ourselves. Um, the agreement is a not-to-exceed, so they will work up to that amount, and we'll figure out how to finish then from there, so.
Is there a local match on that?
Nope, no local match. Um, just, uh, they will take the grant application on themselves. Uh, so if we don't get the grant for some reason, then that, then they are out that time.
Okay.
So.
Has everyone had a chance to review that agreement?
Tiffany was the one that was reviewed by legal counsel, the one that was distributed.
I'm not sure I didn't do their packets.
Okay, if, if not, you're...
I don't have the final, I know that.
Okay, I have the final right here.
That Andy has had a chance to review this?
Yep, Nathan and I have talked about it.
Yeah. And so, Angela, do you happen to know, like, is this version that's in our packets, is it the most recent that has been reviewed? It's okay if you don't know, 'cause we can tackle it afterward and make sure...
Nathan's got the final version.
Yeah, I have one copy here, or we can sign it afterwards, whichever.
I would move to approve the contract as presented.
Sorry.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. That's a big deal.
Thank you.
Moving forward, Nathan, you're up next as well with the replating.
You want to do plats first, then rezonings? Yeah. Okay. Can do. So, have two for you today. Uh, the first one is a replat up on Wilken Road to be called Siegel's Landing. That's a play on the owner's name, Mr. and Mrs. Siegel. Uh, what they're doing is taking one and a half platted lots and creating two platted lots out of it. The Plan Commission approved this, uh, in July. There is a stipulation, it does need to be added to the front here, uh, that the plat would not be used for residential purposes. That's in combination with a variance. These lots are smaller than standards, so, uh, that does, the first page needs to be revised, second page, which you signed, is not. So, uh, any questions on that one?
I would move to approve as presented.
Sure.
Can I have a motion in a second? Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The second one is a far more standard plat. It's a one-lot plat to be called Pat's Spot. Uh, I'm not sure if that's a play on words as well, but it's a fun thing to say. Uh, it was approved in June by the Plan Commission. Uh, this is located just south of Lorraine. Again, it's a one-lot plat, uh, going around, splitting till the acreage off of the residence.
Move to approve Pat's Spot as presented?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you again. Now I'll leave these here for you guys to sign afterwards.
Okay, I think we're ready to move into the, um, the rezoning, the, the next.
Okay, yeah, we have two. Uh, so the first one is 25 W R E Z four. Uh, and I actually put some slides together for this because, for both of these, but particularly the first one, uh, because this is such a special area. It's not a whole lot, and it's meaningful why the rezoning. Area be rezoned is, is shown. So, uh, up, uh, on the screen is the subject property overall. Uh, formerly Pyrotech, they're still the owners, but, uh, that's the location in Park 30. You can see US 30 along the bottom. So, next one, Tiffany. Uh, this is the submitted site plan. What they are proposing to do in the green area is to, is to install, uh, three upright, uh, fuel tanks, uh, for fuel distribution, two types of diesel and gasoline. Uh, there's also, uh, unloading racks, and then the red line is a fence that would surround overall property. The area in green, though, is what is driving the rezoning, because our zoning code requires that any flammable fuel storage is a special exception under our intensive-use district, our heavy industrial district. This is all zoned IPM, our lighter industrial, so the rezoning is to rezone it to heavy industrial. Per staff's recommendation, they proposed a small area, which basically surrounds that green block. Next slide. So basically, that red area would be the area to be rezoned, uh, rather than rezoning the entirety of that parcel as industrial. So our code does allow for partial lot rezonings, and in this case, uh, it was a fairly effective way of, of doing it. Uh, next slide. Overall picture showing the zoning. The gray area is the IPM light industrial zoning district. Green is agriculture, and of course, the red is the area in question. Next slide. Uh, comprehensive plan map, uh, again, for reference. And then finally, uh, the last slide. They are, even though it's a small area of about 6,000 square feet that you can't really do very much on, uh, felt like it was still appropriate based upon some other times that we've dealt with IN districts to still, uh, include a, a list of zoning commitments. So those, uh, uses there listed, even, even on 6,000 square feet, would not be permitted. Uh, asphalt-ready mix plants, heavy manufacturing, and so on. Obviously, not likely to put a landfill on 6,000 square feet, but just to, to flush out that list. So this does come to you with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. The vote was six to three, uh, in favor of the favorable recommendations, so it was not unanimous. Uh, and there were a few comments made by the public, uh, at the Plan Commission meeting, um, and they may be here as well. So, any questions for me at this point?
This is, um, GND's number 2025-14, just for your awareness. Obviously, I'm a member of the Plan Commission. I was one of the three that voted no, and I think it's only fair and appropriate that I just put a comment on that, but, um, I, I believe that there may be a better site for this. I, I, I hope, I hope that we can work something out, we can find something, uh, for this business to, to locate here. I just didn't really feel comfortable with this site, this, this particular location because of the nature of that industrial park. Being very light industrial and mostly medical device center, so, uh, that's my view on it.
I would add, go Chad's comments. Uh, I think it's a, it's a good opportunity, I think, for both the county and for the company, um, but I'm not convinced that this specific location is the best spot for it, but, uh, hopefully something can be worked out.
Um, I would move to deny ordinance 2025-14.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And those saying, uh, and that ordinance will die.
Should I just skip that?
Yeah, just skip it. She was asking if we should skip that number in our next ordinance, since we denied this one, so we're just gonna, she said just skip it.
So moving on to the next.
So the next one, uh, which I have slides gathered for as well, just out of fairness, so I'll just briefly go through it, uh, is 25 W R E Z five, which was a rezoning from AG Agricultural to IPM Industrial Park uh, for a total acreage of about 320 acres, outlined there in blue, comprised of one, two, five different parcels. Uh, next slide, Tiffany. Uh, you can see, this does butt up against industrial zoning on the south side of the Rara track here in Union Township, extends from, uh, basically Maury Road down to Raver Road and 300 South. Uh, so about a mile, give or take, uh, north and south. Um, the intention, the stated intention is, was to, uh, extend that industrial proactively in order to allow for large users. Uh, the property owner, Brent Trader, had stated that he had been, uh, courted, I guess would be the right word, by various developers who were looking for more acreage than what he had, uh, so he wanted to add in additional zoning. Next slide. Uh, aerial view, next one. Uh, the comprehensive plan, uh, calls for this area primarily to be rural agricultural. That's the green area. You can see the grayish, uh, blue-gray area is the industrial area. So this would have been, or would be, a, uh, rather large, uh, extension away from what our comprehensive plan character, uh, future character in land use map calls for. Uh, that said, there was a lot of discussion at the Plan Commission about, uh, whether this could be appropriate and, and under what conditions, um, even as proactive rezoning. Uh, ultimately, it, it came down to, I think, the primary comment, and, and Chad, correct me if, if you remember differently, uh, it was felt that it would be a premature rezoning at this point. If they had a proposal, or if they had, uh, some sort of other, um, intentions, it just felt like this was too soon and could wind up leading to a piecemeal development that we don't want to see. We want to be, uh, a little bit more cohesive. So with that, then, the Plan Commission does forward an unfavorable recommendation to you for, uh, 25 W R E Z five. And that does come with, and you're gonna have a unanimous, uh, unfavorable recommendation.
Any questions for Nathan?
That's ordinance 25-15.
Yes.
Um, I think just echoing off of what you said, um, there's no plan, there's no company, it's, um, wanting to go there, but if he does have a more, um, concrete idea or a business that is wanting to do something there, I would definitely be open to hearing, um, that idea, but to rezone it with, um, no clear mission or direction, I just don't agree with. So I would move to deny ordinance 2025-15.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and that carries unanimously. Now, I will say that we have a great economic development corporation. We have a wonderful director at the Economic Development Corporation who, um, is probably more than eager and at the ready to help, uh, businesses identify locations that, that fit well within Whitley County, and, um, so I would encourage, uh, both of these parties to, to lean into our Economic Development Corporation and work to find, uh, good sites. Um, thank you, Nathan. Is there anything else from you?
I think I've taken enough of your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Nathan.
Uh, the next item on our agenda today is the Community Corrections Board meeting dates.
Hello, I'm just here to request approval of the 2026 Community Corrections Advisory Board meeting dates as presented. Um, and I did verify that all of the rooms I have listed are available on those dates.
Any questions about the date of certain meetings?
Move to approve, uh, the meeting date schedule request as presented?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and that carries unanimously.
Thank you. Please do.
Uh, next up is Ryan Getz from the Highway Department. Uh, we'll be discussing both of the ordinance.
Good afternoon. Now we've, excuse me, discussed this a little bit. Um, we just want something out, more concrete. The horse-drawn vehicle registration fee, um, research I have done has not changed since 2017. And, uh, we can travel in the areas of Whitley County that have, uh, horse-drawn vehicles or in other counties, involving, uh, the damage that's done, and, um, with that, we believe that the current $60 fee is just not quite enough to help offset our costs of repairing those, and we're, um, looking to get more than you. those, and we're looking to get an attorney in the schedule, proposing to start 2026, going from $60 per vehicle to $100, and then increase that every even number of year by $10. As requested by commissioners, I did discuss with Chris Schwartz, Bishop of Southwoodley Area, Almish Community. He didn't seem to have any concerns other than what would be the cap on this increase. And I told him that it would just be something that we'd have to discuss, make sure things were going well, and if it was enough, whatever, it could be adjusted accordingly. Other than that, he was going to discuss that with his folks down there in Southwoodley Area. I asked him if he would please let me know if he had any further commentary from him or the folks in Southwoodley Area. I've not heard anything. It was awful last week, on vacation, so I know we're just kind of putting this out there for discussion at this point.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate you reaching out to them, to the community. I thought it was most appropriate. I'm not opposed at all to the new proposal for the fee. I just thought it was more appropriate to have a discussion with them before we approved it. And just to, just that I'm clear on this, it's every other year, there will be a $10 increase, but we don't currently have a sunset date on that, like there's no...
Correct. And the $100 is kind of in a median area with other counties, Northeast Indiana have a community that uses horse-drawn vehicles, and some are considerably more, some are a little bit less, but most are around that $100 a year.
I think there is a sunset, because I think the last increase is 2036. There's nothing beyond there.
Okay.
At $150.
And that $150 puts us more in line with some of our neighboring counties, but also some of our neighboring counties have a much larger population in the Almish community.
I just ran some numbers in, you know, 2017, raising, going up basically $10 every other year, but next year it'd be $110. That's, we haven't changed it in eight years, so I think it's a pretty good time that we put it through.
And like most things, I say if you're going to do increases, it's better to do incremental increases than, rather than doubling a fee in a year, you know, people can't really plan for that. So I'm supportive of it.
Andy, can we approve this if as long as we waive the second reading?
You can.
And do we have an ordinance number on that? Sixteen?
Yep.
It's 2025-16.
Well, I know we've discussed this for the last couple of years, that at least that I can remember, and the fee seems reasonable to me, so I would move to approve ordinance 2025-16 and waive the second reading.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and that motion carries unanimously. What else do you have for us, Ryan? Everything going well?
Guys are out.
I saw chip sealing.
Seems like what the counties, the chip seal capital of the northeast area, and it's got, NDOT's doing 14 minutes between line and Southwoodley. Looks like they're also going to do east of line all the way to county line. I was on that road yesterday, so it's, that part of the county might be a little messy for a while, you know, they're about to throw this stuff on heavy and then brush it off after a couple of weeks or so. Just be cautious out there and watch for our guys, watch for NDOT. NDOT's got plenty of signage. Our guys always have trucks inside and out to close, not close the roads, but to make sure everybody knows we're coming.
Yep.
Moving very good, so they got two loads today, and get a lot of mileage.
Yeah, well, please let your team know that we're very grateful for the work they're doing. I know it's a busy, busy season.
Just the weather wouldn't last, like, this for a little bit longer, because when it gets hot, it's, looks like it's coming later this week.
Right. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
The next item on the agenda is the 2025-13 Court Interpreter Grant, which we introduced in our most recent previous meeting, but with one member absent, we were only able to introduce during that meeting. So I don't know if there's anything else to be said about it. Again, we've introduced it, so are there any questions? Amy's here, she can speak to it if would like.
I know we've talked about this on multiple occasions, so I would move to approve ordinance 2025-13.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and that motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Whitley County allowable costs policy. Is this you, or is it...
Sure. This is something that the last couple of years for State Board of Accounts has been on their radar, making sure that all counties have these. So I think we talked about it after, ought it be two years ago now, and it just kind of sat, and we missed it. So brought it back up and had Andy look at it.
Okay. And any thoughts or comments?
I had some comments, but I, they're incorporated. I think it's good to go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Tiffany or for Mindy? Hearing that, I entertain a motion to approve the allowable costs policy.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, the same. The next item on the agenda is the recommendation on positions and compensation for the 2026 budget. We talked about this briefly in the last meeting. You probably saw today that Andy got a code in front of you. I know, Andy, you had looked into this for us a little bit, and if you just kind of want to talk about what you found, that'd be great.
Sure, yeah. I think it just needed a little bit of a clarification in that it's not actually the commissioners necessarily making the recommendations for salaries. All the departments need to make their own on a particular form provided by the State Board of Accounts, then it comes to you to review. You can make additional recommendations if needed, but if not, you can also approve the recommendations of each department and just submit that to council. So a little bit, I think, different than was kind of laid out before.
Right, right. So Tiffany, is that form currently in use?
Well, if you remember, council didn't want wages to be inputted, everybody's separate. I know departments kind of discussed it during their budget meetings, what they would like to see happen, but we didn't have them actually put what their request was, but they all did, like, most of them let council know their thoughts on...
Yeah, the statute says the statement must be on a form prescribed by the State Board of Accounts, so that's in the statute. So I don't know what's been done in the past, but it seems like a...
I'm wondering if that's the Form 1, which they do.
I'll recognize Sheriff Spencer's.
Unfortunately, we're told not to make any recommendations for our budget inside. It's supposed to be left at whatever the prior year was.
Right. Yeah, so I know that that's always, that's been, at least in recent years, that's been the will of council, because they look at funding our essential budgets, and if there's room, then, then what they do is they take that difference in the budget and determine what the appropriate percent increase would be for each employee. They've done it differently. I mean, many years, it's a percent increase, and some years, it's a flat rate, what they call cost of living allowance. But it sounds like we may need to go back to department heads and have them complete this form for commissioners to review, and then we can either concur or make our own recommendation based on that. But it's certainly a lot different than us trying to come sit here and determine what an appropriate percent increase would be, having very limited information, and we know that there's an anticipated, I believe, 2.5% cost of living allowance from the federal government. I don't believe the state is offering any increase for state employees in 2026. This makes more sense, you know, after getting Andy's interpretation, that, you know, we just need to go back and find this form and have...
Which they do fill out the form for every other piece of their department.
Right, right.
Not sure timelines, how that can be done before, because I have to have everything input on Gateway by mid-month, and you guys won't be meeting before then.
And council meets tomorrow. Are you saying that tomorrow they're going to approve?
Tomorrow is when they give me guidance on what to put and advertise for the highest, because we always know they can lower anything that's put into the Gateway system, but they cannot raise it. So I'm hoping that they can give me...
So Gateway has a cutoff of...
You have to advertise so many days before your public hearing, and our public hearing is set for, would be September 3rd, and then they're going to adopt the budget October 7th.
Because the statute specifically says that the county executive has until August 20th to present their statements to the fiscal body. So maybe in the future, that needs to be shifted around a little bit to comply with the statute.
Yeah.
And that should still give me 10 days. So we could add it, and I can just have department heads fill out, I guess, what they want for recommendations, and just have them email you guys? Is that how you want it?
Yeah, I think that's great. And then we'll concur, or we'll make our own recommendation in our next meeting.
Yeah, because I'm not trying to cause trouble, but the, you know, the statute says that all the department heads shall file. It's not an optional thing to say, hey, we don't want you to file anything. They have to, yeah. And they also can say, we don't recommend any increase or anything like that. I mean, you don't have to, but they have to file something on the form prescribed by the State Board of Accounts, that per the statute.
Right.
So I'll send out a Form 1 to all department heads and ask that they get those back to, do you have a date that you would like to have them back to get a little review?
As soon as possible.
And I think for next year, just to get on everybody's radar, those are supposed to be back to you by July 2nd. So I know we're kind of putting this together, but in the future, I think that, if you just look at the code, there's dates in there on when things are supposed to be done.
Yeah, and I think to Tiffany's point, they were done, but at council's request, compensation was excluded. I think this is, this is really great, because now moving forward, we have a better understanding, and we'll do it differently.
Yeah.
Okay, so moving on, the next item is the capital asset reporting engagement letter.
Yep, and that is, if you remember right, the company Peterson Consulting that does that, really in detail, list of all vehicles, land, equipment, there's all kinds of stuff that's on there, and they're just getting all of this going for 25.
Their fee is $3,925, and that's a fixed fee for performance services. Shows that they're including rights of way, roads, bridges, regulated drains, but includes land, buildings, land improvements, equipment, and vehicles. Any questions about the capital asset reporting or the agreement with Peterson?
I would move to approve the Chairman Banks deciding the engagement letter.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and that motion carries unanimously. You were ready.
Good afternoon. Here are the three originals. You can use them. The sign's up to you.
Okay.
Every year, our health board members are on a four-year cycle, but they're different offsets, so you have different people off and on at different times. Grace Lauder was a recommendation by Columbus City Mayor under statute. He did, again, recognize her, and then the health board voted her to be reappointed. And also Bob Sossaman, also was a partner by a year, out of four, and he has to be reappointed. Health Department or Health Board voted him in. And Dr. Burkett for another four years, and his term ends by the end of this year. And then he's good with those. You can sign at the bottom of those pages for your chairman, and then I can send them into the state. Any questions? Remember, a couple of years ago, the state legislature changed how all that came together, and it's a little more complicated now.
Yeah.
But there is a defined list of people that you can choose from, in terms of professions, and then the mayor of the largest municipal district in the county gets to offer three recommendations of one that commissioners would choose for. And then the council has one, and five.
Any questions for Scott?
I would entertain a motion to accept the reappointments.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and that carries unanimously. Tiffany, do you need these?
I would need, I'm turning them to the state. The second item, if you would allow me to voluntarily collect administrative fee for CPR instruction and a dollar fee for a vaccination card replacement until we can get the ordinance drafted. Appreciate it. Because I think it needs to be more in reform, correct?
It does, but you could just approve these two fees.
If you could just approve those, great.
And then we'll add them into the final ordinance for this one.
We, CPR instruction's been the most requested topic in the county. We've already done about 20 people in the last month, already since they've been certified. And this administrative fee would help add money to our account so that we can replace Manniken equipment and Manniken himself. The American Power Association charges us a fee, depending on how, or excuse me, which certification they do, whether it's the HeartSaver one, or it's just the basic CPR, and those are, you have to buy those cards, and then the money we're getting is replacing that and helping discuss our equipment as well. Let me just put that in. And we just put that in, um, collections, and then at some point, we'll come before the council to have that money reapropriated to the appropriate line item whenever there's a demand.
So, or is that reflected on this fee schedule?
Yes, so if you look at the, the fee schedule you have in front of you...
I see, it's on the back.
The three highlighted areas are one, which you passed in previous ordinances, those sewer exemption process, which is on the front page, and two in the back, which is CPR, and then the, uh, dollar for replacing card for organizations. We do a lot of requests for those.
So, is that fee like per person or training?
Right, so your basic CPR card fee right now is three dollars fifty cents, so it'd be thirteen fifty. And then if you do the Heart Saver, it's like sixteen, seventeen dollars, or a little more.
Can you talk a little bit about how long we've been doing this? It sounds like it's brand new, but I didn't have any knowledge of it till you shared it with me the other day.
Right, so HFI, once it came in, these are, if you remember, recollect, HFI, there's fifteen different categories. Um, key performance indicators that the state wants us, Health Department, to do. One of them is trauma prevention. And so CPR, as well as like sleep slacks for babies, car seat checks, bicycle helmets, those things are what they want us to promote in the community to help people in trauma situations. So, Darcy and April both been certified in CPR, and they've done some classes. And we talked about, do we want to charge different for private citizens versus NGOs versus corporate? You know, 'cause we're getting requests from all kinds of people. And we decided just a flat fee, that way there's no confusion on who's what.
Yep. Any questions for Scott about the fees?
I would move to approve the updated Health Department fee ordinance.
Second. Just to be clear, it's fee schedule?
Fee schedule.
Yes.
Sorry, I was reading off our agenda.
Uh, um, okay, I have a motion and a second. Uh, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand, and that motion carries unanimously. Anything else for you, Scott?
It will be visible this last, this couple months, beginning a lot of activities with partners in the community. I know that at the Bank of School night, that Steve was my baby, has ten different partners, corporate partners, or partners in that for children, so if you haven't seen that, go to our Facebook page, it's listed there. Doing CPR, doing lots of different things in the community. Any questions for us? Just so you know, you may be invited to the August thirtieth, um, meeting with the State Board Commissioner, or if it doesn't need every hour.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good, thanks. Um, the next item on the agenda, we did receive another, uh, uniform conflict of interest disclosure. Uh, has everyone had a chance to review? And again, just as a reminder, this was, uh, something that was, uh, stressed with high emphasis in our recent audit. Uh, there's a new conflict of interest disclosure statement, and, um, they came out with more definition, maybe this applies to, and, you know, and how to file these. And so this one comes from DeeDee in, in probation, um, whose spouse, uh, owns, the name of the business is escaping me.
Vannam.
Vannam, that's right, thank you. And, um, they do some painting of, of lines, um, in parking lots and, and some seal coating in, in the asphalt parking lots. So, she is a co-owner, um, and she's, she's declaring her conflict of interest. So, new procedure, correct procedures for us to accept those, and then for that employee to file with both the, uh, clerk's office and to upload this document and to Gateway. Any questions?
I would move to approve the, um, conflict of interest that was presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand, and that carries unanimously. Uh, these only come with, uh, two signatures, um, from commissioners, so... I think for probably appropriate for just the chair or vice chair. Uh, the next item on the agenda is payroll and accounts payable claims approval.
I went up earlier, um, this afternoon, and took a look at those, and everything was in order. So, I would move to approve payable.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve payroll, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand, and that carries unanimously. Accounts payable.
Accounts payable, uh, was also in order, so I would move to approve accounts payable.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor raise your right hand, and that motion carries unanimously. And the last item on the agenda today is the previous meeting minutes approval from July twenty-first.
I would move to approve this presented.
And I will second, and call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Oppose the same?
Abstained.
We have one abstention. Uh, at this time, I'll open up the floor for public comment. If anyone would like to come forward and speak today, that this would be your chance to do so. Hearing none for public comment, Andy, is there anything you'd like to add today?
Nothing.
Tiffany, anything you'd like to add? Tammy, anything you'd like to add? Rob?
I have nothing.
Teresa?
I have nothing.
I'll just add one thing, we did get a quote out of spoke, um, in the, um, last month or so, in the commissary and in the council meeting about moving our, uh, VHF equipment from the old jail to the tower of the Highway Department. We do have a quote now, um, some fixed pricing, so just wanna be transparent about that. And, um, the, the price that came in was fifty-two thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and five cents. I'm still advocating for this, and I'll be sharing that number with council tomorrow. And I have some ideas how to fund it, so, um, just wanted to add that. And that's all I have. So, with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks.